Thank you. Good evening. I'm calling the meeting of the Castor Valley Unified School District Board of Education Meeting to Order. Are there any comments for items on closed session? Okay, we are recessing to closed session now. We'll be back at 6:00. Thank you. All right, we're back. I forgot to ask for approval of the agenda.
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
How was it amended?
All right, I thought it was amended, sorry. Not amended. I moved that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is someone in a second? Okay. Well, because he moved an amended agenda and it's not amended.
I'll second a second time.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Hey, Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. The agenda is approved. Thank you. Now we will recess to closed session. Are we live? Okay. I'm reconvening our meeting to open session. Welcome to the meeting of the Castor Valley Unified School District Board of Education. My name is Dot Theodore. My pronouns are she/her, and thank you for joining us tonight for our meeting. The first item is reporting out of closed session. We did not take any action in closed session. Mission statement. Trusty Kuziak.
Thank you. I'm excited to read this because it's our brand-new mission statement. "We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents."
Thank you. "The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board's agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a Request to Speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the Agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, the speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the Agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each Agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from speakers under public comments but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented." Thank you. Now we'll move on to school report and recognitions.
Yes, we're excited to have Independent Elementary School represented here today, and it's wonderful to have Patrick Hansen Schmidt start us off. It's going to be a great presentation.
Thank you for having me. It's great to be here. So normally, Independence at the end of the year, but this year I decided to go first. You're welcome, Jennifer. I don't think Jennifer's here. Polimeris typically gets the first go. But so today, well, with all of my Board presentations, I like to start off just reminding us of Independence' specific vision for our students. And tonight, I really want to focus in on the socially conscious problem solvers who have an appreciation and curiosity for difference part of our vision. I also like to ground us in some specific data that we have at school. Every year, we give a student survey to our 2nd through 5th graders to get a sense of what they're feeling, areas that we can work on and improve. And there's two questions that we always ask. One is, have you been made fun of or left out because of how you look or who you are? And are you worried that you're going to be left out because of how you look or who you are? Last year, as part of our SIPSA creation, we decided to really focus in on this question because this was the question that was the area that we could grow the most. You can see in last year when we gave the survey, about 11% to 12% of our students were worried that they were going to be made fun of or left out because of who they are or how they look. And so our goal for this year is to bring that down to between 5% and 6%. Obviously, we want to try to get it to zero, but realistic goals. And so we do this in a number of ways. Everything from the visual representations that we have on campus with our murals, both the Pride mural and our Science Center mural, as well as all of these other pieces that I listed here, from Restorative Justice to MTSS, so the books that we buy for our library and our classrooms, making sure that all students feel grounded and safe and secure while they're at school. The part that we're going to really focus in on tonight is the No Place for Hate program that we do at Independent. We've done it for the past four years and are signed up to do it again this year. So we have been a certified No Place for Hate school since the 2018-19 school year. And I have Wendy Pham, our counselor, here to just give a little bit of background on what No Place for Hate is.
Hi. So ADL is, it's called Anti-Defamation League, and it's a leading anti-hate organization in the world. It was founded in 1913 in response to an escalating climate of antisemitism and bigotry. So ADL's education department provides educational programs, training, and resources. Their anti-bias and bullying prevention programs for grades pre-K to 12, including No Place for Hate and a World of Difference Institute, assist educators and students in understanding and challenging bias, bullying, building ally behaviors, and challenging injustice. So No Place for Hate is a collaborative initiative that provides pre-K to 12 schools with an organizing framework for students, admins, staff, and family members to develop long-term solutions for creating and maintaining an inclusive and equitable climate. Schools receive No Place for Hate designation in the following ways. So building an inclusive and safe communities in which respect and equity are the goals and where all students can thrive. Empowering students, staff, and family members to take a stand against bias and bullying by incorporating all programs under that one powerful message. And then lastly is sending a clear unified message that all students have a place where they belong and should be treated equitably. Thanks.
Thank you, Wendy. And so I'm going to walk through like what getting the certification looks like. What do we do at school to make sure that we get that certification? The first part of it is the No Place for Hate promise, and we say this promise at every assembly that we have. Our student council says it, the rest of the assembly repeats it. I have a video here of some students saying the pledge and then what it means to them.
This is the No Place for Hate promise. I promise to do my best to treat everyone good. I promise to do my best to be kind to everyone, even if they are not like me. If I see someone being hurt or bullied, I will tell a teacher.
Everyone should be able to feel safe and happy at school.
I want our school to be No Place for Hate.
If someone is younger than you, it doesn't mean you can treat them unfairly. If someone's older than you, it doesn't mean you can treat them badly.
We want to embrace diversity.
If I see someone being hurt or bullied, it means instead of looking at them, or if somebody's not treating somebody the way that human beings should be treated, I should go and look for somebody to help.
Everyone should feel like this is their home, and they belong here.
If somebody's being hated on, I will not just stand by, and I'm going to tell a teacher.
Sweet, right? Uh-oh, there we go. So then, the other part of it is activities that we do throughout the year to talk about and learn about different concepts that go with making an inclusive environment. So I'm going to show the activities that we did last year because obviously we haven't done them this year yet. The first activity we did last year was the Tree of Respect, where in every classroom, students had a conversation about the difference between kindness and respect. And they each came up with their own commitment that they were going to do to show respect to other people, to their classmates, to their teachers, to their families. They wrote them on a hand. We collected all the hands and created these murals all over the campus and all of the bulletin boards that we have. After that, we did an Inspired for Change competition. This was an art and essay competition. Students could choose somebody out in the world that inspires them to go out and create positive change. These were our two winners. One picked Greta, a climate change activist, and the essay winner picked Duke Ellington as the person that inspired him. And then finally, the last activity that we did last year was the I Am Puzzle Piece activity. Each student in the school created a puzzle piece that represented them, different parts of their identity, what they like, all that type of stuff. And then we piece it together to create a visual representation of how we're strong together. And so we're going to be doing more activities like this this year, and I'm excited. Hopefully, we'll see that data go up. Everybody will feel a little bit more safe and included at school. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. After we do the recognitions from your school, then we'll ask questions of you. Thank you. All right, Quentin.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Quentin Hansen, and I'm the current ASB Student School Board member. It's my privilege to invite Sarah Waxman up to the podium with me. The Governance Team, along with Independent Elementary School, are proud to honor Sarah Waxman as Indy's Student of the Year. Sarah, yeah, go ahead. Applause, yeah. Sarah is a very well-rounded student with interests including taking care of her dogs, Kaia and Chase, rabbits, Ellie, and fish, Angel. That's a lot of points. Also, swimming, cooking, drawing animals, and reading Judy Blume and survival books. Sarah has a love for dance and performed for Castor Valley Performing of the Arts. She has also played soccer for Castor Valley Soccer Club and plays softball for Castor Valley Softball Club, where in the 2022 season, she won Pitcher of the Year. Very nice, very nice. Sarah was also elected to play travel softball for Synergy Softball, where she's a starting pitcher and plays first base. Her team won multiple tournaments over the summer. Sarah has a vivacious and tenacious spirit, and nothing gets her down. Her teachers are quoted saying, "Sarah is kind, helpful, and hardworking." She greets her peers and teachers every day with an infectious smile and kind words. She's a friend to all who know her and even those who don't. You can always count on Sarah to brighten your day. This tenacity is evidenced by the years she's spent applying herself and diligently working on improving her speech and language, which ultimately resulted in her testing out of special education. Her ability to work through, yeah, go ahead. Applause. Her ability to work through any obstacle that she faces without even the slightest waiver or doubt is truly beyond her years and an inspiration to the staff at Indy. Once again, the Governance Team joins Independent Elementary in honoring Sarah Waxman as an outstanding student.
Congratulations, Sarah. Would you like to introduce your family and say anything to our audience tonight?
Yes, I would. My dad is very loving and kind and very compassionate and hardworking. My mom is very nice, hardworking, and compassionate. My brother, he's very nice and loving. He's very nice and loving and kind. And we should never doubt somebody of doing something, and there's no place for hate. I would like to thank Mr. HS and the teachers for selecting me to represent Independent Elementary. My teachers have been wonderful, and my experience has been amazing. Thank you to my teachers for making learning fun. Thank you to my teachers for staying after school on their own time to help me learn. And thank you to my teachers, Ms. Sims and Ms. Carson, for giving me this dream. When I grow up, I want to be a teacher.
Thank you very much, Sarah. That's a beautiful message.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to honor Marjorie Jaliour. I hear she's not here this evening, but we'll still provide her with a certificate of recognition for being the Independent Volunteer of the Year. So, the Governance Team, along with Independent Elementary School, are proud to honor Marjorie Jaliour. Marjorie has been an Indy parent for almost 10 years and has been an active member of the community for all of them. Along with being a full-time nurse and mom of three boys, Marjorie is the book fair coordinator, has been a PTA Board member, presented at Career Days, taught FAME, has been room parent, and drives for most field trips. Additionally, at the beginning of the pandemic, when the students were nervous and information was constantly changing, she created health posters and went into all classrooms to present, explaining COVID-19 to the students. She empowered them with information such as how to wash their hands in a fun way for 20 seconds so that students would be informed and knowledgeable rather than fearful. During this time, she also transformed the book fair into an online store, which they have since kept along with our in-person event, resulting in raising over $18,000. Audrey is the definition of a supermom. She somehow manages to do it all while remaining unfrazled and calmly composed. She's an invaluable member of the Indy community, and for that, we're proud to recognize her as an outstanding volunteer. The Governance Team joins Independent Elementary School in honoring her as an outstanding volunteer. Thank you, Marjorie.
All right, Principal HS, we invite you back to the podium. All right, my colleagues on the board. You have questions, comments? Mike?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the anti-hate curriculum and the promise that your students are making. I am always so impressed by what's happening in our Castor Valley schools, and I often wish that some of these things that's happening, like anti-bullying, is something that we as adults would embrace a bit more. I think sometimes we forget that. So just thank you for doing that and all that you're doing at Independent.
Vice President Whitaker?
I want to echo that, but what I want to say is that, you know, you celebrate our diversity in your community, and your community makes your school a great place to be and enriches your community, and it also enriches our community. So I want to thank the staff that's here for all the work that you do, the families are here who support, and the kids. I mean, just seeing them embrace one another is such a beautiful thing. And thank you, Principal HS, for all your hard work. We really appreciate it.
Carrie?
Sorry. I want to say to Sarah, I am so proud of you on your learning journey. I just want to let you know, I didn't learn how to read till 2nd grade, and we're all at different places, and I know you'll do great things. So congratulations.
Carrie?
I just want to start off by saying that I'm glad that I'm not mic'd tonight and have to follow Quentin in his first really excellent reading, and even worse, have to follow Sarah with a terrific presentation. So, but Pat, I really liked the way you focused your presentation right off the bat with that one line out of your vision. It really encapsulated the entire idea, I think. But then you went on to present a very robust program with all kinds of facets to it. It was just really a great thing to hear. So thanks so much for all of that, and thanks to all the folks at Independent.
Dolly?
Well, I want to thank Independent for being here. I was able to visit last year, I think, kind of near the end of the year. It was really wonderful to see. I do remember still my vision of seeing science teacher and the P.E. teacher and also the, I think it was pre-K. And I was very happy to see that. They're a wonderful staff and students at Independent. There's No Place for Hate. This is really, sounds like a fantastic program and a place for difference. I liked the way you showed examples, like the Tree of Respect, so I could really understand what it is that you're doing. And the essay, right? Inspired for Change and the puzzle. I want to thank the student who got the award, Sarah. Really, it's really so wonderful to see you on your journey, you know, excelling to your best. And best wishes to you as you keep going through our schools. I think we'll see you again. And to Marjorie, even though she's not here, but maybe is online or something like that, that 18K for just changing to online book fair, what a simple yet great idea. Yes, wonderful to Marjorie, too. Thank you so much.
Patrick knows I am so impressed by everything they do at Independent. I want to say, when you do this kind of work, it has to be, as Dr. Reiman always says, persistent and pervasive. And that's what you guys have done at Independent. It is just a part of the fabric of Independent under your leadership. We are so fortunate to have you. We look at Patrick as a model. We're always learning from you. You're focused on data and all about kids. So we are so fortunate to have you and so awesome to have Independent here. Sarah, you are a well-rounded student, and I have to tell you, this was the first time a student actually read something after they were given an award. So it was really cool to see. And I love how they described you. Vivacious spirit, infectious smile. Awesome. Nice to see you. And your parent, Marjorie, I mean, it takes a lot. When you listed all of the things, when we listed all of the things they do, it's like unbelievable that they still, they're a nurse, and all of this gets done. So we always thank our families for supporting us. So thank you for being here.
And I'm sorry, Quentin, I missed you.
That's all right. I just want to reiterate what everyone has said. Just thank you so much for the beautiful presentation, and I, it's just, I think it's so great that you're doing all these things at Independent and just starting our kids off young, learning these things, because really, these things are super important. You know, these ideas of acceptance and of just being kind to one another, that is super, super important. And it's just, Sarah completely embodies all of that, and she's just a role model in general. I can guarantee you, every single kid at the high school would consider you a role model if they've heard of all the things that you've done. And I also just want to let you know that the high school does have a soccer, softball, and swimming team. When you're ready to try it, and we could really use you. So, thank you.
All right, so I get to go last. Sarah, I super love that every time you smile, you take down your mask so we can see it. So thank you very much. Your smile is beaming. And Principal HS, thank you so much for a beautiful presentation. We sit here on the board, and we have the responsibility and the honor to guide the vision of our district, and we rely on our administrators and our staff to implement that. And you've done such an amazing job. It was a beautiful presentation, and I loved every minute of it. Thank you very much. And could you take a moment to introduce your staff?
Yes, quite a few here, a lot more online. But in person, we have Melissa Vaz, our attendance secretary, Nancy Law, our secretary, Lisa Bro, 3rd grade teacher, Krista Samboy, pre-K teacher, Wendy Pham, counselor, Paul Amerigan, TK teacher. Did anybody slip in that I didn't see? Okay. And then I know, well, we have a parent in the back, Jennifer, and parents up here. Online, we have Kyra Sims, Carrie Eichman, Maureen Martin, and a few others that are slipping from my mind.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Student Board Member Report. Quentin?
Yes. I just want to start off by letting you all know, student council elections are happening at the elementary school level throughout the district. The first DSLA meeting happened on August 30th, DSLA being the District Student Leadership Alliance, and we met and talked about the issues that are really affecting our students, and we hope to just overall improve the district throughout the year. Independent Elementary was just recognized for 15 years of Green Ribbon Awards. Independent Elementary is also celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month by having an interactive activity every day of the month to celebrate Hispanic heritage, which I think is really cool. I was actually taking a look at the few of the activities that you had. I thought they were great. African-American Parent Advisory Councils have begun meeting around the district. The high school's council met yesterday. Information pertaining to the high school, the football team is off to a little bit of a rocky start of the season, but we're holding out hope they'll come back. However, the varsity and JV water polo teams have done incredible. An example of this is the JV Boys Team winning 20... An example of this is the JV boys team winning 20-0 against Alameda yesterday, a team that they considered a formidable opponent, so we're proud of them. We also had the class of 71 at the high school do a tour through the high school today. And I saw and got to talk to a few of them, and they seemed happy to be there and like, wow, what happened to my school? You know, it's crazy. Also, the dodgeball tournament has been happening this week at the high school with, I believe, I want to say 16 teams in total competing. We just had our quarterfinals today, and we're going to have our semifinals tomorrow. And the blood drive is also happening at the high school. I believe that's happening on September 26th. And I was told to say that anyone at the high school who is 16 years older, please find a leadership student at the high school, and we'll go ahead and get you signed up for that. We'd really appreciate it. The blood drive is all through the Stanford Blood Center. So if any high schoolers are out there and you want to donate, 16 and up, find a leadership student. That's all I have. Thank you.
This is great. We've never had so much applause at a board meeting, so thank you. Next up, we have the Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, so just a few things. As you heard from Quentin, this month, from September 15th to October 15th is Hispanic Heritage Month. We passed a resolution at the last board meeting, and this is really to celebrate the histories, cultures, and the contributions of our American citizen, people in America whose ancestors actually came from Spain, Mexico, and Latin America. On our website, I hope that you go and visit, in, under the curriculum and instruction, there are tons of resources that Ms. Eagles has put on there for us, for teachers and families. So I wanted to thank her for that. And it's great to hear Independent doing activities. Our schools are doing that throughout the month. We had our mariachi music program orientation last night. Mr. McMaster, as always, did a beautiful job. The cafeteria at the high school was packed with people. And I would encourage everybody who's interested to check that out, but also attend the end-of-the-year event. In May was just absolutely beautiful, and we'll have it again this year. This is our after-school music program that is free for students, and it is for students in 3rd to 11th grade. Some of our students have been in this program for five years. The other thing I wanted to ask, I wanted to actually share my appreciation with our administrators and leadership who attended the Fall Festival and Man in the Booth. We had tons of people come and say hi, thank us for different things, and ask great questions. We had a lot of new, young families with younger children that are not in school yet, asking how they register and things like that. We do have a beautiful pamphlet that Ms. Kairer put together with lots of great information about our school district that you can share with others. It is also online. And then last thing I wanted to say is, the best part of really my week is always visiting classrooms. I've done that this week as well. But when I'm seeing, I'm seeing the impact of great, the great education that our teachers and staff are providing our students, that our students are receiving. Our students are learning skills in various subject areas. They are learning about themselves, about their histories and other people's histories. They are expanding their intellect and questioning why things are the way they are and what they can do to change things, right? They really are expanding their capacity to read and write and do math and think and speak in ways to understand power and equity in order to promote compassion and humanity. And I always think about what James Baldwin said, "The paradox of education is precisely this, that as one begins to become conscious, one begins to examine the society in which he is being educated." So that's my report for today.
Thank you. Wait, no applause? Okay, we're going to take a short five-minute recess. So if any of you need to leave and go and do homework, you're welcome to do so. But I invite you to stay because we have a really interesting presentation on perseverance during the pandemic, as well as a public hearing. Lots of great things on the agenda, so please stick around if you want. Thank you. Okay, we are reconvening our meeting. Whoops, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. The next item is reports from our bargaining unit. So CSEA and CVTA, are you in the house? Right on.
Good evening. I'd like to start off by giving a nice, very sincere thank you to CV Pride for their organization of our counter protest. I'd also like to thank all of my colleagues, community members, representatives from other teachers' unions who also showed up to show their support, and really every ally who showed up in support of inclusion tonight. An outside group feeling empowered to organize an anti-inclusion rally in our community is unsettling. And I am glad that there are so many more folks who recognize and support the good work that we do every day in the district. I know that this distraction will not stop our members from doing the difficult and necessary work of educating our community's children to grow into their power. There is no need to defend or to justify teaching against racism, homophobia, transphobia, and sexism, and all forms of discrimination. That is not indoctrination. That is reflective of what we value as a community. And that was also evidenced by the massive rally that we had out there. It started before 5:00, and just different waves of people came in, so that was really nice to see. So again, I just want to say that, you know, thank you, and we really value as a community inclusion. Really, our CVTA motto is actually "Value Education and Build Community." There's no caveat to this motto. We value all of our students we educate, and we build community through inclusion, support, and understanding. That is what we do, and I am so grateful to represent a membership that does this every single day. So thank you, Board, and thank you, everybody, for being here, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. Amy, is there anyone from CSEA online? Okay, all right, so we are moving to public comments. We have 26 public comment cards, and we're not accepting any more comment cards for tonight. And how many do we have online? Okay, so we are going, my recommendation is that we reduce the time per person to one minute and allow all the speakers who we have in the house and online to speak. Okay, thank you. All right, so because we have people online and in our house, we will just go back and forth. So I will call three people from the comment cards that are here, and then we'll take three comments from people online. Is that okay? Okay, so first up is Michaela Smith, followed by Teresa Ally, and Pebble Gally. So you're the first three up. Oh, thank you, Trustee Whitaker. We will closely cut off your time at one minute, just to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. But thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Michaela. My pronouns are she, they, and I'm a freshman at the high school and active member of the Pride Club. When these murals started to be painted at the schools, my peers and I were overjoyed. We were so happy to be recognized and to see that the schools are working towards creating a safe, welcoming space for the members of the LGBTQ+ community. Yet here I am today because those feelings have been tempered by calls to action on social media and the protesters outside this very building, reminding us that we are still not safe or welcome. Please, take a moment to think about the fact, for many people in our community, home isn't even a safe place. CVUSD and the Board's commitment to creating a safe place in our schools for all is critical for each student's success. People should feel free to express themselves in any way and feel like we matter, whether that be gender, sexual orientation, race, or religion. As a member of the LGBTQ+ community, I would like to say thank you to the Superintendent and the Board of Education. These steps mean more to me than you know.
Thank you, Michaela. Tesea? Tesea Ally?
I made the mistake of not pulling it up before I got up here, so give me just one moment, please. All righty, thank you. Hello there, my name is Pebble Gally. My pronouns are they/them and it/its. And I wanted to say that alongside Michaela, I myself was incredibly overjoyed when the murals started popping up around schools. And I just wanted to take a quick moment to essentially say that these murals are not made to teach our children sexual identities or sexual anything. The phrase sexuality refers to, in a broad sense, LGBTQ identities. And as a whole, a lot of them are seen as being sexual. When in fact, I myself am not, I myself am not sexually attracted to a single person being underage. And also, I'm just not sexually attracted to people. Even if I wasn't underage, I wouldn't be sexually attracted to people. So the thought that these things are essentially teaching children to be sexual is inherently incorrect.
Thank you, Pebble. I may be saying this name wrong. Is it Tereya Ally or Tereya? You're up.
I only had a minute, so hopefully I can get through this. Thank you, Board, for hearing. I'm a parent at Castor Valley Schools. I have two daughters. And never in my wildest dreams would I think that I've been, have to come to a school board to talk about this topic. I found that the inclusion of LGBT curriculum is a part of the district policy around respect, diversity, inclusion, and encouragement at a really early age. I was confused. We're not talking about college students, but we're talking about kinder through 2nd through 12th grade. Books that are telling kids there are many ways to express who they feel, including teaching, encouraging, and celebrating non-binary, agender, gender, queer books to kids as young as kindergarten. Discounting parents and doctors who say, the parents, your parents or your doctor may assign you a gender, but you are whoever or whatever you feel as early as the age of two. Who gives a school the right to teach and encourage sexuality to our children? The line has been crossed. Schools is for teaching math, academics, English, and science.
Thank you, Tereya. We're going to move on to the next speakers from online. Annie?
Hi, my name is Annie. My pronouns are she/her. I grew up in Castor Valley. My husband works in this community. My parents live here, and my nieces are now going through Castor Valley schools. I have seen the growth and development of Castor Valley schools for the last 40 years, and it is quite remarkable. This community that I love has created safe spaces and fostered academic integrity and a commitment to social justice. I denounce outsiders who come into our community to sow discord, spread falsehoods, and promote white supremacy. We know that our educators and staff condemn and stand against racism, sexism, homophobia, and all forms of hate and discrimination. And I am proud of educators and staff who protect our students by standing firm in our commitment to democracy, safety, and student empowerment. Thank you very much, Board. Thank you very much, educators.
Thank you, Annie. Our next speaker is Neda. Go ahead, Neda.
Yes, hi. This is Neda. My pronouns are she/her, and I'm a CVUSD parent of two kids in CBSD. And I want to express my appreciation to the school district for these murals of inclusion. I'm really proud of our school district for taking a stand to support and protect our LGBTQ+ students and staff and everybody in the district, including the community. And I ask for even more support in other ways, and I hope that this will continue for all of our children at school, normalizing and supporting our kids who are LGBTQ+ or maybe exped, or normalizing physical or mental disabilities, encouraging wellness, leaning up standard, breaking down racism, and everything else that our school district tested for. I really appreciate all of them, and so proud to have my kids in this district. And I hope that we continue this really important work.
Thank you for your comments, Neda. Jenny Proud, you're up next.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Board for their commitment to provide an inclusive and safe space for our children. I believe that you all have good intentions when you approve items to be implemented at our schools, and for that, I thank you sincerely. With that being said, the approval of the pride flags on our campuses appear to have been made without proper consideration of true inclusivity at our schools. When I look at the flags, I can't help but feel a sense of exclusion. The mural reinforces the inclusion of a small minority of people that are already so embraced and loved in our communities. We have Pride Month in June, and we have pride flags that fly at the high school, which is great. Wouldn't it be great to also show that same kind of love to our Latino, Black, Asian, white, disabled, and religious brothers and sisters? It would be wonderful to extend the exclusion to our entire community. Had the input of parents and students been requested, you may have discovered that perhaps the best choice for an inclusive artistic rendering at our schools may have been a simple rainbow flag, or as complex as a beautiful mosaic of symbols representing everyone.
Thank you for your comments, Jenny. Next up, we have Cynthia Eaton, Danielle Barrera, and Bill Teroli. You'll each have one minute at the podium. Okay, so Bill will call you up online when it's your turn. So Cynthia Eaton, please.
My name is Cynthia Eaton. My pronouns are she/her. And I'd like to submit my comments from the perspective as a Christian, a parent and grandparent, an American-born Asian citizen, and a retired health education educator here at Castro Valley Unified School District. If the only images that young people see reflect heterosexual norms, that in itself is indoctrination. Those protesting the murals want to perpetuate an agenda of intolerance that, in my opinion, is seriously antithetic to educational and civic responsibility goals. Creating an inclusive, welcoming environment is an important part of education. Seeing people who are different from me does not mean that I have to become or be like them. I can take pride in being who I am and enjoy and celebrate the diversity of those around me. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Danielle Barrera.
Hi, my name is Danielle Barrera. I'm a Mexican-American, single mother, and I grew up in Castro Valley. I used to believe all means all. I don't anymore since the putting up of the "we believe" signs and the "progress, pride" murals. I love everybody, and I have felt that love from other people my whole life. And it's not like we all don't have hardships. We all do, and just the ones represented in one single flag do not represent all the hardships that exist out there. I think that's a single-minded way of thinking, and it's not representative of me, of my family, people of faith in general. So I do see a problem with it, like Mr. Brechner's shirt that "pride is political." Political has no place in Castro Valley Unified School District. Political stances do not belong in schools. Thank you.
Bill Teroli.
Yes, hi.
Our meeting.
Sorry that I had to leave the meeting. Child patience is sometimes not what you wish it to be. So as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, I obviously support any action that reaffirms and supports these students that need that, and we all do at that age. But my concerns about this really get more into the manner in which community was and was not engaged, and the fact that community came forward and students came forward with this project and were not necessarily included in its implementation. So, and I think that partly that has helped result in a situation where we have a very contentious feedback about what happened. So I think that one thing that we need to really think about in this process is how and how we engage with community and how we get people involved and keep people active. So that's my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And so we need three speakers from online, please. I guess we can go to two more, since Bill was online. All right, Hans, welcome to our meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that there's no diversity on this board, actually. What's most important is what's in between your ears and nothing absolutely else. What makes you diverse is you're diverse of thought, you're diverse of mind, you're diverse of education. You're educating our kids that what's most important to them is what their skin tone is. That's not what's in between their ears. It's their thoughts that matter. We're not teaching our kids reading, writing, math skills right now, and that's not the important thing that you're teaching them. You're telling them, "These flags are what's important." You're telling them precisely the exact opposite of what makes them special. And what makes them special is what's in between their ears, their thoughts, their minds, their dedication to their life and their family. And you have forgotten what makes you educators. With that, done.
Thank you, Hans. All right, Austin, you're up.
Yes. Pride is, in fact, political, and that our politically elected leaders have an obligation to stand up for those that are often marginalized and classified as other. That's our LGBTQ students, and that's what this Board has done, and has done it in partnership with Castro Valley Pride for the past 13 years. What this Board fails to do is to always make sure that those decisions are being made at the Board level by elected political leaders. Why does this matter, you ask? Because a couple of years ago, a single principal made a decision that prevented flags from being flown at every school. Because across the street is a CVUSD employee standing next to a sign that calls LGBT folks groomers. The Board has an obligation to step up. We applaud you, we thank you. A minute is not enough. It is not in line with the letter that we submitted asking for adequate public comment time.
Thank you, Austin. Is Frank in the house? Okay, maybe he left. All right, Billy, are you in the house? Do it, okay. So we're at, we're at the maximum that we can have in this room. Okay. Please do. All right, while we're waiting for Billy, let's go with Hope, who is in the house, and then Haley.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Hope. I use they, she, or he pronouns. Any of that is chill. I'm a senior at the high school, and yeah, I definitely heard about the original plan for the Rainbow Pathways, like, maybe a year or so ago, but quite honestly, I wasn't sure if it was going to happen, but I was really surprised that last week I heard about those murals of being up at those other schools, and that was very cool. I'm grateful for the Board and also my peers for all the time planning and energy or just overall organization it took to make this actually happen. Last year, I had the opportunity in an English class to survey a lot of people from community and some friends and family, and I really started to understand with those new connections and conversations just how important it is to connect with people and have visibility and education at our schools, just learning actual stuff and just being able to have
Thank you for your comments, Hope. All right, Billy?
Hi, guys, thank you so much. My name is Billy Bradford, one of the founders of Castro Valley Pride and concerned LGBTQ citizen. The folks across the street, one of the things they're focusing on is two of the things, is grooming and indoctrination. I knew that I was gay when I was about 10. It was 1965. The word gay hadn't even been invented yet. There was no flag. I had no role models. There was nothing. There was Liberace, but I didn't want to be like that guy. So the idea that you can put a rainbow flag up and groom somebody or indoctrinate them or put a mural up is just nonsense. Otherwise, I'd be a very straight person. I raised my son in Castro Valley. He's 27 now, very successful young man, but we moved here when he was six, and my house was the gayest house in the planet. It was rainbow stuff everywhere. He was on pride marches. We did rallies for marriage equality and Prop 8. He helped me build signs. We listened to "Share Together," for crying out loud. And yet, he is a nice heterosexual, and despite all my work...
Okay, so we're going to go back to... Okay. Frank, are you guys, are you in the house? You have one minute.
So I'll be short, because that's what you're allowing. We are not here to discriminate against anyone. Our focus in this message has been about five, six, and seven-year-olds. So like my counterpart was saying, we are here for the youth. We understand that children go through different times, and everyone identifies differently. We've been preaching that all day today. Our focus has been on the youth, making sure that they have the opportunity to become children. Today, my organization built on LGBT, everyone, gays against groomers, is all gay people to fight this exact thing. You guys are posting things like this, pissing people off, and now we have governments that are taking rights away from us. So we just ask, pay attention to the youth. We understand that when you're 10, it might be reasonable, but not when you're five. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next comments are from Haley and Ally, and then Kai.
Hi, I'm Natalie Bennett. I'm reading for Haley, who is reading for Tian. To start, I would like to thank the Board for their work in the meeting, making our school a more inclusive, safe place, and for their support of the Rainbow Pathways Project. I'm reading on the behalf of Tian, and their pronouns are she, they. She is a junior in the part of a large LGBTQ community at Castro Valley High School. I'm extremely grateful that the Board has continuously made sure to support and affirm me in my identity and my right to exist as a queer person in this school district. But to think that there are grown adults who care more about their prejudice than the students in our schools is baffling, and at the same time, unfortunately, nothing new for me and my queer peers. In the last week, I have seen countless adults claim that these murals are grooming kids and offering them LGBTQ...
Thank you, Natalie. Ally? Hi, Ally.
Hello, my name is Ally. My pronouns are she, they. Seeing LGBTQ+ flags and murals around my school is so relieving. Half of my friend group is part of the LGBTQ+ community, so knowing that they're safe and supported in this district means the absolute world to me. The fact that people who don't even attend or live here are saying that learning about gender identity and sexuality, et cetera, is indoctrinating students or children, as they say, is very angering. These things are important to learn, especially because of the bullying that can and does happen behind closed doors and in public. Having a supportive school and district is essential. So many kids don't have supportive families, so the school can be an outlet or a safe place to just, you know, help them because they don't have the support at home. I know I'm not the only student who appreciates an inclusive and accepting community, and I want to ensure that our district protects people like me.
Ally. Hi, Kai.
Hi, my name is Kai. My pronouns are he, they, and I'm a freshman at the high school. I just want to start off by saying that I really love the work that has been done and seeing the pride flags in many, if not all, classrooms, including the murals. And I just want to say that it's so important that people have a place to be seen and to be safe in this community, as has always been so against discrimination. It just saddens me to see people trying to protest a space being welcoming to all, and there's already so much discrimination coming from adults, peers, online, everywhere, to wanting to be able to see school as a safe space is truly essential to everyone. There is still so much work to be done, but there has been so much support and goodness in this community so far. It's just very important to me that people feel safe in their community and are free to be themselves and to express themselves fully.
Hi. Amy, do, okay. All right, the next three speakers are Bryn, Ellerin, and Rebecca.
Good evening. My name is Bryn. I'm a junior at CBHS. I go by he, they pronouns. I'm the co-president and founder of the LGBTQ+ Club at CBHS. I wish that, I am very disheartened by the fact that there are people outside this building that are protesting the Rainbow Pathways Project, because the Rainbow Pathways Project is helping students like me and my club members to feel more safe and accepted in the school. My co-presidents and I want to make it a goal to make it a safe and accepting place in our high school so that people like me don't have to feel and be in fear to going to school every day. And that's it.
Thank you, Bryn. Hi, Ellerin.
Hello. My name is Ellerin. I'm a senior at CBHS. Thank you to the school board for all your support with LGBT students, but more needs to be done. Since fourth grade through middle school, I've told myself not to be gay. I had best friends telling me that if I was gay, they wouldn't be my friend anymore. If they were only educated on homosexuality, maybe I would have accepted myself a lot sooner. Finally, when I got to high school, I started to learn about LGBTQ people in history, but I only ever learned about how they were killed in the Holocaust, or how they were beaten to death in parades, or how they committed suicide. I never heard about how they made a difference, or how they became successful, or how they were able to love who they wanted to love. It's so important for schools to show that students have a safe place to be who they are and to learn about LGBTQ people in history and every aspect of education. So...
Thank you, Ellen. Hi, Rebecca.
Hi, I'm Rebecca, a senior at CBHS, and I go by they or she pronouns. I was one of... Well, I am an LGBTQ plus student at CBHS, and I'm one of the students that spearheaded the Rainbow Murals Project with Carissa. And we feel that it's so important that these murals exist so that students have a safe place at school and know that they belong. The hate outside is disheartening, but an experience I had at the Fall Festival reminds me why it's so important. A woman and her wife and children came up to our booth, and they were debating leaving the school district, but once they saw that mural in their kid's school, they knew that this was their home. And that's the point. We want this to be a safe place for everyone, and the board knows that that is important, and we appreciate their work so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Our next three speakers are Carissa, Renee Castle, and Julie Buher.
Good evening. My name is Carissa. I'm a senior at CBHS. My pronouns are she, her. And I, along with my friend Rebecca, are the ones behind this Rainbow Pathways Project, which has seemed to garner quite a bit of opposition from people who are both a part of and strangers to our Castro Valley community. Tonight, as we all discussed, or perhaps debated, the importance and value of this project to LGBTQ plus students, I'd like to provide some background on what this project was meant to be about. Rebecca and I aim to make this project more than a pretty piece of artwork. Not only did we hope the paintings would act as a sign of support and welcome to LGBTQ plus students, but also serve as a reminder to the greater school community that LGBTQ students exist and are a part of the school like any other group of people. The goal of this project was never to indoctrinate or groom children, but to simply recognize the existence of one minority that is underrepresented in greater media.
Thank you, Carissa.
Hello, my name is Renee Castle. I'm truly impressed with the program described earlier in the agenda, the Bullying Prevention Program, No Place For Hate, The Tree Of Respect, The Pledge Of Kindness. Wow, really impressed. Okay. On behalf of Star King Unitarian Universal Church, I want to express our deep appreciation and thanks to the Castro Valley School Board for choosing inclusion and safety for all of Castro Valley students. Having the Progress Pride Flag designed by Daniel Quasar at all 15 school sites sent an important, unequivocal message to our students and our community that inclusion, not hate, is the answer. Unfortunately, there are some that embrace fear and bigotry. They are intent on disrupting and turning us from the course of acceptance and inclusion. They are wrong and in the minority. Many more support your actions and have shown up and will continue to show up. We sincerely thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Julie.
My name is Julie Buher. I'm a senior at Castro Valley High School, 1979. And I'm half cougar, I got to say. I'm sorry I had to say that. This is my chance to say. Anyway. Dear Trustees, Eden United Church of Christ is a Protestant congregation that has been serving the Eden area, including Castro Valley, since 1865. We proudly identify as an LGBT open and affirming congregation and as a sanctuary congregation that welcomes and accompanies newcomers through the immigration and cultural integration process. We commend the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees for adopting in February of '22 a plan to paint the Progress Pride Flag in a prominent location in all the 15 school sites. We also commend the administration and school site leaders for swiftly implementing this plan and therefore reaffirming our motto, "All Means All." All people of faith, as people of faith, we strive to extend Christ's hospitality to others and provide sanctuary to the most vulnerable. So the news that Castro Valley Unified School District...
Thank you, Julie. Thank you. Our next three speakers are Reverend Dr. Arlene Nearing, Zoe Van Hoover, and then Peter Robinson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie's pastor. I'm going to pick up where she left off. As people of faith, we strive to extend Christ's hospitality to others and provide sanctuary to the most vulnerable. So the news that Castro Valley Unified School District has become the subject of homophobic and transphobic social media campaigns is deeply troubling to us. These hateful actions do not reflect the teachings of Christ, and by and large, they don't reflect the views of our school community. We denounce these campaigns as unfaithful and un-American, and we call on those who participate in them to cease and desist. Our hearts go out to all LGBT students, family members, employees, trustees, and residents in this school district and the rainbow families of which you and we are part of. We see you. We respect you. We...
Thank you, Pastor Arlene. Thank you. Hi, Zoe.
Hi. My name is Zoe Van Hoover. I'm the mother of a kindergartner at Vanoy Elementary School, and I'm a lesbian. And I have to say how very welcoming and delightful it was to see these murals go up. I want to thank the board for working with the students who helped organize this and for putting these up, and I want to ask you all to stand firm and keep them up. I know multiple families already in my small Vanoy kindergarten community that have queer parents, and this is welcoming to all of those children. And I think having murals like this up are not just welcoming for the kids who come from LGBT families, but also for the kids who are growing up in families with the people who are across the street, who are growing up in households where their families don't accept them. And, you know...
Thank you, Zoe. Hi, Peter.
Hi, my name is Peter Robinson. I'm a parent of a wonderful five-year-old at Vanoy Elementary. And I just want to say that as a parent, seeing my daughter interact with this mural and ask me about it gives me such a great opportunity to start conversations and continue conversations we've been having in our households about promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think we're in partnership with the school in educating all aspects of our child's development, including emotional, social growth, and this is a critical part of it. And to know that the school district is supporting us on these issues as well, this means a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Our next three speakers are Fred or Diana Zankowski, Alex Dufourina, and Anika Gall.
It cannot be any more eloquent than the young people who have already spoken. We are the board... I represent the board of Congregation Sharamee in the neighborhood here. We know the importance of diversity and tolerance in our schools and appreciate your actions earlier this year to approve murals of the Progressive Pride School on school campuses. As Jews, we are keenly aware of the cost of remaining silent when any group of people are forced to hide who they are or demonized in the public imagination, or denied equal rights, or targeted for mistreatment. Our tradition teaches us that we all have an obligation to speak out when we see any group being mistreated. We proudly state without hesitation that the Jewish community of Castro Valley stands with you in the struggle for full respect and inclusion for people who are LGBT...
Thank you, Fred. Hi, Alec.
Hi, I'm Alec Dufourina. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a special education teacher at Castro Valley High School, and I just want to thank the school board for unanimously supporting the LGBTQ Inclusion Committee last year that I was a part of and for all the other... The murals and in general, just the inclusion aspect of our district of not just LGBTQ people, but people with disabilities, the students that I serve, and everybody. And I was on that LGBTQ Inclusion Committee, and I did some research. And basically, what I found is that more representation improves outcomes for LGBTQ students, not just academically, but in terms of mental health. And the kids need a safe place to be, and sometimes it's not the home, sometimes it's school. So we really need them to show them that they're safe at our schools, and that means as much representation as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Alec. Hi, Anika.
Hello, board. Thanks for the time. I'll be brief. Again, to thank you. Thank you for putting this up. I am a community member in Castro Valley and a parent of two children who graduated out of this district. I believe they were incredibly lucky to be in this space, and I am grateful that the board continues to work on making it safer for everyone. The only other thing I will say is that I'm grateful you picked this flag, which is the most inclusive flag at this point. Thank you for that. I think it does stand for everyone in our community, and it helps create the safe space everyone needs to learn. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anika. Our next three speakers are Emily Reichardt, Millie Kelly Crawford, and Jeffrey Arthur. Welcome to our meeting.
Hello, board. I will also be fairly brief. So my name is Emily Reichardt. I'm here as a community member. I have two children who are in Castro Valley schools. I feel incredibly proud to live in this community and to be able to be at this meeting to thank you for putting these flags up on our campuses. I think it is crucially important... I am also professionally a school psychologist, have degrees in education. I know that it is super important for people, especially in marginalized parts of our community, to have some representation and to feel welcome. And I just think it is a really great thing that our district has done this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Hi, Millie.
Hi, I'm Millie. I want to take this moment to speak in support of what CVUSD has been doing to promote diversity and acceptance for all in our community. The installation of pride murals, in-classroom messaging, and policies that welcome, include, see, and embrace children and families of all types makes our children and families safer and allows them the space they need to be themselves and to learn. I know there are those who disagree that we should welcome and accept all people as they are. I know that even small changes are often hard and can come with painful backlash, fear, and can be met with anger. I applaud our community for being brave and standing up against the tides of hate and resistance to protect our most vulnerable community members, our kids, some of whom are already fighting every day to be themselves and to be accepted. I want to stand up beside those kids and have their backs, and I appreciate our district and staff doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Arthur? Are you in the house? No? Okay. Jocelyn Schmack. Jocelyn, are you still here? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. There is a check here that says "does not wish to speak." I will read your comment. "I want to thank the people who came up with this project and with the board for allowing this project to happen. I like that we are accepting diversity in our schools and letting people and families know that they are welcome." Thank you, Jocelyn. All right, thank everyone for coming and speaking and sharing your thoughts with us. No, we called them already. What is your name? Yep, come on up.
Case law demonstrates that the Constitution, and specifically the due process clause of the 14th Amendment, protects the fundamental right of parents to direct the care, upbringing, and education of their children. Unfortunately, my rights and other parents' constitutional rights have been violated by Vanoy's Elementary School openly painting a flag on government property that is a symbol of sex. I had to tell my son what the flag represented, thus violating my values, that he is too young to understand and even hear the word "sex." Furthermore, the flag subjectates students to official school activity that includes a promotion and inclusion of only one lifestyle that violates students' freedom of religion. Displaying this flag violates Title laws, which prohibits discrimination in public education on the basis of sex. If the purpose of the flag is inclusion, a mural can be painted over the flags by children representing their cultures, as well as having the mural representing...
Thank you. As well for them... Sorry, your time is up.
...feel included in the Delhi culture of the school.
Your time is up.
That's fine.
That's all the time that you have tonight. Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Welcome back to our meeting. We will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes, Superintendent Amati?
No changes.
All right.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Velli?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes also. So the consent agenda is approved by zero. And now we will move on to reports, discussion, and action items.
Yes, and our next item is titled "Celebrating Who We Are." And I'm just waiting for our point and we'll get started. It sounds so much fun outside.
Yeah, it's like a party.
All right. Our students. This beautiful picture is a picture I think we took a couple of years ago, but this is, we saw our students tonight shine. Just some information on who our students are. We have 9,277 students, total number of students. So when you look at our elementary and middle and high school, we have about 3,039 high school students, 2,088 middle school, and 4,150 elementary students. Thirteen percent of our students identify as English language learners. 9.4% of our students receive special education services and 22% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. The demographics of our school district is absolutely beautiful. 24% Hispanic Latino, 21% white, 28.8% Asian, .4% Pacific Islander, 3.1% Filipino, 4.4% Black. 17.9% of our population is multi-ethnic. And then .1% American Indian or Alaskan Native. Beautifully diverse. And I, it's really important to always just remember that we actually have preschool all the way to adult. So it's, usually we say TK-12, but we actually have a preschool and we have an amazing adult school as well. This is just the number of students at each of our schools. As you see here, we have schools that range from like our elementary school at Palomar's, 121, independent with 638 students. So neighborhood schools where kids can walk and really be in neighbors, in neighborhood. Canyon Middle School, 1,300 students, and 761 at Creekside. Castro Valley High School, 2,808. And then, of course, we have our Redwood High School with 111. Virtual Academy, this is only the number of students who are full-time at the Virtual Academy. We have some students who are part-time at the Virtual Academy. Some of them take two classes at the Virtual Academy and four at the high school and vice versa. Roy Johnson is our transition program when students in special, within special day classes turn 18. From 18 to 23 is where they attend the transition program and that is held on the campus at Redwood. And then we have a special ed preschool with 30 students. And this is our team. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Samora to take us through the rest.
Thank you, Superintendent Amati. So our team really comprises of several groups and that's our certificated, which is all of our teachers, council psychologists, LPs, nurses, social workers, program specialists, really educating and supporting our students, there's 519, as well as our classified. The classified is always considered the backbone of our district. And there are our par educators, custodians, clerical, ground maintenance, maintenance operation, campus supervisors, food service, library assistants, and they're comprised of 365. And then we also have our school side administrators, our district administrators comprised of 58. I think one of the most exciting part of this data is the years of experience and it ranges from one year all the way to 38 years. And you'll see the breakup there and how many of our certificated have been here for quite several years, as well as our classified. With that, you also see the data with our master's degrees, as well as our doctor's degrees within our classified and certificated staff. So it really shows the amount and breadth of what we're comprised of, as well as our education. So I like to consider the new employees our class of '22, '23. And the journey really started back in February when we started the DLI recruitment and we started interviewing our teachers for the dual-language immersion program. We started this early because we wanted to make sure that we had the best of the best. And that's why we had to start in February. Usually we, the job fairs start in April or May, which leads to our own job fair, which we started in March. This was probably one of the earliest job fairs in our, in the Bay Area. And again, we knew that it was going to be difficult to get certificate and classified employees or candidates out there. So we started really early. We offered interviews on the spot at our job fair, as well as contracts, thanks to the support of our superintendent and the Board. And we hired several people and we're out of the gates hiring and at the job fair, as well as at their classified, explaining to them our process because we're part of the Merritt School District and explaining that process to them because that's sometimes a challenge to understand how that works. But we were there consulting people, how the process works, and hiring them, put them part of the eligibility list. This was only, this was only possible through the collaboration with our special ed, human resources, and education service departments, coming together to support. One of the goals that our Board has developed under the strategic direction is the recruitment, the retention, and this is where the support comes in to retain our employees, to provide that professional development. Over the summer, our special ed department offered a half-day support for our special ed candidates that are joining our team. Then, human resources with business services offered one-day professional development to help understand how the district works, the ins and outs and nuts and bolts. Also, our TB tip put on a great presentation with our education services on the third date to also understand different components and structural strategies for our teachers. And then on the fourth day, education services took it and hit out of the park with their professional development to help embrace the question of how do we ask and ask the correct questions about race and ethnicity and how to support students before the school year started. So this was how we support our employees so that they have the right tools and we can retain them so that once they enter the classroom or once they enter our school sites, they're ready and set to go. As part of the classified part, this is the first time that we actually had interviews in Spanish. Our district hasn't had that as part of the interview process. We embrace that this year as well. Also, streamlining the application process. We're also offering online testing. We've always done in-person testing, but now we're doing online testing. So the candidates for our classified ranks can take online testing. And this was really one step close to try to make that customer service to support anyone that's interested in our district. And as well as having oral examinations online as well. So this is really helping us recruit and retain our employees. So the makeup of the class, I like to call them our class because they are our classmates, starting out here. You know, five of our new hires attended elementary through high school here in Castro Valley. This is really remarkable because not only do they attend school, but they come back and work for us. And that's what we want. We want our students, our classmates, to go out, get experience from the world, then come back and join us to teach our students. The experience ranges from one to 23 years. We had teachers that were teaching in Spain, in Bolivia, in the court community schools, in all parts of the world. Also, their credentials vary from mild to severe. We have one teacher that's co-teaching with her first grade, Ms. Heidi Morgan, her first grade teacher. We had a special ed teacher who left her district to come and teach with us at Castro Valley. That was a very sensitive area because she's been established there for 20 years, but she heard about Castro Valley and she took the leap of faith. So this, again, is a testament to what we're doing here in Castro Valley. One of the areas that unfortunately our census data from the US doesn't do a good job is really break down our ethnicity. So I sent out a survey and asked voluntarily if they could self-identify themselves. And here you see the makeup of our classes. About 35% responses of our new employees and this is what they responded to. So I'll just take a minute, I won't read the various ethnicities, but you can take a minute and just read what they self-identified. I think one of the areas that this, why this is important for me personally, I'm a Castro Valley resident. My student, my students, my children came here and are students and graduated. And it's really important that I also see what I represent and what we represent that also is in the classroom. And I think we're making great strides for that. Maybe later on I'll ask the Board to pass a resolution to allow my two children to come back and start kindergarten, start all over again. So talking about the US Census data, this is the data that we collect that is according to what we're required by law. And there's a comparison from last year to this year and the grounds we've made with making a diverse teaching population or also certificated population with our own teachers. There's a lot of research that says that students need to see their own representation in the classroom and sometimes we miss that mark. But I think we're making great gains on what we're trying to accomplish here with our certificated staff as well. So you can see that huge comparison that we're really successful in doing. I believe that ends the presentation.
Really, our goal tonight was to talk about who we are. I mean, you see that our students are diverse. We have amazing young people and you heard them tonight. But we also have just an incredibly skilled and diverse community of people who support them and help them and we're continuing in the right direction to find always the best qualified people who also, you know, represent the diversity in our school. And the most important piece after we hire them is to retain them. And that's all the professional development and support that you see. So, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Gary, you had your hand up? And then Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, well, thanks for that report from both of you. I think it's really great to see the progress we've made there. But one observation that I would have is on the day that we welcomed the, all the administrators back to the district at the very beginning of school, they were all together down at the high school with us. And it was really very clear how diverse the administrators are. They look like the students. It was really impressive to see that. And now it's great to see that we're also making progress on the faculty. So we're getting there. This is really good. I know it's a hard journey, but we're certainly making great progress. Thank you.
Our audience is here to clap, not, our audience is gone that was clapping for us. It feels so empty now.
Thank you.
Mike?
I think I have two questions and one comment. I appreciate this data. This is really fantastic. I just appreciate that, you know, pandemic was kind of a big deal in terms of disrupting a lot of things, right? Do teachers stay in teaching? Who's going to go into teaching? I can appreciate that the pipeline of new teachers coming to our district can be very challenging. You know, we, I think it's, I think, it's really wonderful to hear from our leadership, the alignment with our intention as a Board to see administrators and teachers that look like our students. And I thank you for affirming that you're doing that. I just, I'm, what can we do more? Like, I don't, how do we, are there things we could be doing within our high school pathways to a career in education, for example? Could there be mentoring we do, even in high school, for students to think, hey, have you thought about becoming a teacher? I'm just, if we want teachers that are representative of our community, how are we, how are we going to build that? And then I have a second question after that.
Well, there's a lot we can do and that's the kind of work we're going to continue to do. So it's, it is on our radar. It is a part of our goal and that's why you saw the difference that you saw this year.
And that's amazing, particularly with our Hispanic community, to see that, to see that delta. I was really impressed by that.
I want to make a quick comment to that.
Please do.
We, we do have that program that I think sometimes people forget about where you go from classified to credentialed.
Yeah. Yeah. That's actually a good thing to, because I know we are applying for that grant again. So we, there's a grant that actually allows our classified members to get their teaching credential. And we started that a few years ago and we have a few classified members who are now teachers and we're applying again to do that. One thing that really the state of California could do to support us is to actually find ways for universities to have, to, with no fee, actually allow people to get their credential. Because when you already have a job and you're trying to go to school to finish your credential, that means you can't make, you know, a living. So there's a lot that I think that we need to push at the state with legislation as well.
Just I'm so proud of the district's efforts overall. It's amazing what you guys are doing. So thank you for that. I mean, this always resonates with me. I know I tend to talk about school lunches a lot. I do have two kids who are consumers of it. And I'm just thinking again about the, how the pandemic has impacted free and reduced, how that's impacted lunch, right? So in breakfast, we provide it to all children. USDA has continued the waiver for one more year, correct? And then we're, the state of California essentially is signaling to us that there will be universal lunch and breakfast for all of our students going forward. And I know that there's some And I know that there's some challenges with that. My question is the indicator of how we get free and reduced lunch. And I'm just wondering if policymakers from, I know that we've talked about this before, but I'm just, as a, I've worked in policy spaces, right? It seems like how we identify those students might be kind of falling apart in light of the switch to everyone getting lunch. And I'm just wondering if policymakers have talked to Department of Ed and said, hey, maybe we need a different way to identify these students, particularly if we go to a program in California that's subsidized from the state of California going forward, right? So, and I know we use that indicator as for other things. It informs us about other things. So how are we thinking about that? Or how are educators thinking about that?
Yeah, so a great question. So what, the state is well aware, and I know we have a lot of groups that are advocating for, you know, school districts because of the waiver from the federal and now it's the universal free meals that the California implemented. So what, how we are able to gather the information is actually the, through the alternate income form that we did implement this year through, so families can actually register their students through Ares and there's a question, and then they can provide that information. As well as during walkthrough registration, we have the Child Nutrition Department present at every single site, just sharing information about, you know, the benefits of completing the application. And so that's how we're able to gather the information. So we are, we have seen an increase in the number of applications, which is great for us. And so definitely we're processing those applications. And so we will see what that looks like. And so, so if we are seeing, if we see an increase, then definitely for grants, we'll be able to qualify for any, you know, other grants that are, that are available.
Thank you, Lavender.
Dr. Zamora, I wanted to commend you as a product of a lower socioeconomic household. Growing up the way that I grew up, I recognize that I do have privilege because of the color of my skin. But when we're talking about equity and creating equity for opportunity, breaking down those barriers, those systematic barriers that prevent people from having access to even knowing that the job's available, to being able to fill out the form. Not everyone is at the same level because of their situation. And I commend you and the team for continuing to break down those barriers so that we do have that equitable access. And it shows in our numbers. And I just want to thank you and your team for all of the hard work you're doing to create that equitable equitability. Thank you.
All right. If there are no more questions, we will move on to item B, perseverance through a pandemic.
Yes. Waiting for the, we have persevered. So, you know, when we look back, oftentimes you forget all of the things you've done to survive through all of this. And I think as we were putting this presentation together, it was like, oh my gosh, there's a lot that had to be done in order for us to make it. So, you know, I have to say, I think what really helped us is we had all eyes on COVID. It was like from the beginning, from weekly updates at Alameda County Public Health Department with working with them and the County Office of Education, which really was crucial during this time. We couldn't have done it without them. Weekly access superintendent meetings, that's where we were, the Association of California School Administrators, that's where we really did a lot of advocacy. I think behind the scene, people probably wouldn't notice or see it, but there were times where the legislators were struggling. Do we open schools? Do we not open schools? Do we give them any money? But all of those that were, you know, those discussions were happening, we were very active, actually pushing to open our schools and saying to people, we have to have options, but at some point we've got to have kids back because we knew how difficult it was for kids. You know, our staff did an amazing job pivoting to weekly virtual meetings, like here, our administrators were here, I remember them, sitting here. This was the first week. And then right after that, it was like we had to be virtual and we met every week and practically if we needed every day to make sure that we answer questions with our principals and leadership meetings. We developed our COVID safety plan. I think I really want to thank Amy to, for all of the information that we were gathering had to be given to her to put together and put online and all of that. It was a lot of work. And, and I think we'll talk about some of the challenges later. But distance teaching and learning was something we had never thought about. When they told us to close schools, we were thinking, two weeks, we'll be back. And then, of course, it was two and a half years, pretty much of just ups and downs. But teachers had to pivot to online, and this was really such, just such heroic efforts because here they are, they have all their materials in their classroom. They had to learn to do things differently online. They also, if you really think about it, not only were they teaching online, but their own children were not going to school either. So it was a double whammy. They developed lessons, homework, assessments, all of those things had to change. We did provide a lot of professional development. We kind of used the opportunity that we had, you know, a day during the week where we could do professional development where we, you know, when everybody's in person, we couldn't. We opened our hubs as quickly as possible before a lot of people because we noticed that some of our students, regardless of how much we were supporting them and the fact that we gave everybody a Chromebook and MiFi if they needed, it was not the same. And at some point, I think we had a presentation, we talked about, if you're grading at that time when we were going through all of this, it was really grading privilege because you cannot think that it would, it's just not the same when you have maybe one child and all the supports at home, even though you're working versus several kids in a different environment. And then we also provided a lot of specialized services online because we do have our specialized students who really, I think, were at a, more of a disadvantage than the rest of the students because a lot of their services had to be in person, yet they couldn't for health issues, for all sorts of things. So that was really important for us to provide that online and sometimes in person. We put in a lot of other supports during that time. We had to have re-engagement strategies because there were times where our teachers were teaching, but they noticed the kids weren't engaged, and that took another step to check in with families and do all of that work. We actually started having online tutoring available. Our own teachers in classified said we would teach online. And you know what was really nice about that was before, when we were in person, all of our tutoring classes were in person, and it was always at the same time after school. So we didn't really catch all the students. But once we said to teachers and students and classified, you can tutor, we'll find, you know, when the kids identify as needing support, you can actually tutor anytime. Could be Saturday, Sunday, night, day, and it worked really, really well. We had, one of the things that really was helpful, telehealth. We had support for our, our students, you know, and wellness checks that we, our social workers did tons of work around that. We started developing SEL lessons, thanks to Ms. Meadows and her team. Those social emotional lessons were really, really important during this time, and then they have continued. We made home visits, our principals made home visits, our counselors, our social workers, our teachers, checking with families and students. We did something that, that we actually shared with other school districts. Ms. Meadows and her team, again, with social workers, came up with this screener that we gave students. We gave it to high school students, elementary students, we sent to the parents, and middle school students took it. That was key. When we gave that to students, we asked questions that told us, we have some students who need additional support. It could have been food, it could be shelter, it could be anything. And really, that to me was the beginning of our work to say, hey, this is how it's going to be for a while, we've got to get to kids. Later on, we actually brought on Paper, which is the tutoring that we have now, again, because students asked for it. And it was really great to, that Dr. Reiman and his team found this opportunity. So now we have online tutoring, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, in many languages and in all subjects. And thousands of our kids actually use that service. Advocacy was really, really important, advocating at the state for funding. Because when we were told, you have to have testing, you have to buy PPE, you have to have this and that, we, our funds would not have covered any of that. So the advocacy at the state and actually at the federal level was really helpful because then we got funding for all of those things that we were able to do. One of the things that we asked for, we kept going to these meetings, saying, we cannot have guidelines shift on us every day. We would go to meetings and we would hear one thing and then, you know, we would have another thing. So that was really, really important. I just found a spelt word, grading. That should be graded an F. Anyway, clarity and guidelines, you know, we pushed, and that's why it was really clear that they heard us because then they would have the health department at our superintendent meetings and state meetings with legislators. Anyway, grading and enrollment, we pushed hard because there was a time where, you know, if you expected to be grading the same way, it wouldn't work during COVID. So that's why they actually changed that. And if you remember last, not last year, but the year before, they allowed us to actually say, to not to have A through F, but you could have N or, you know, or S. And parents could also ask for a different way to be, for students to be graded. So that was really important at that time. Enrollment, I know Ms. Chan pushed a lot around this one with, you know, CASBO and Business Services to say, we have students who have moved, we have families who have, who have left the state, we have families who are not coming to school, even though we're trying to find them. As you heard, like in Los Angeles, there were 10,000 students who were not there. So we really advocated for us to get some reprieve around that. And then reopening schools. Can't tell you, I think until some of our legislators had their own children in online classes and knew how hard it was, it was really hard to get them to that point, but they did listen. So that was great. In fact, one time we, during our conversations with the governor was when we just said, look, this is not working for most kids. We've got to open schools, but give us what we need so that we can keep them. And the funding that they gave us allowed us to have all the testing and all of those guidance in place. Technology, I'm going to turn this over actually to Ms. Chan to go through the rest of it because there was a lot done in Educational Services, Human Resources, getting substitutes, all of that. There was also a lot done in other, you know, in other areas that really allowed us to do the work that we did. So. Okay, so, yeah, so technology, as you know, pandemic shifted education from traditional to online version. So we deployed quite a large number of Chromebooks, you know, devices for students and staff. So as you can see, there are a list of what we've done. You deployed, you know, about 85, 8,500 student Chromebook devices under one-on-one device program, 550 MiFi's. We started with 23 before COVID, and then we were up to 550 during COVID. So, so that's what we did. We were able to identify, so our principals reached out to families who needed Wi-Fi, and so that's how we, we identified the families and issued them the MiFi hotspots right away. We also increased investment in technology infrastructure, as you probably have noticed in our ZBB, right? So in our budget. So we're definitely, that's one of our focus because we wanted to make sure that our students are supported online, especially during that time. And then, let's see. So I know that with the distance learning, oh, sorry. Did you want, yeah, actually. So I think it was really important when we said, we're done with distance learning, we still have options, but we need to go to hybrid. That took a lot of work. All of our facilities had to be, you know, things had to be moved. We had to, remember at one point we were six feet apart. There had to be signs everywhere, and all of those things really had to do with maintenance and operations and custodial staff. We had to do a lot of work around communication with families. Some families wanted to come, some didn't want to come. It was really, really difficult, but we tried really, you know, like every day, as much as we could send information out every week. We had new procedures for students, staff and families, and that was hard at first. I'm going to drop my kid off, but I can't come in, all of those things. We had lots of different things to support them. Students and teachers obviously adapting to hybrid and in person and remotely. It was like, am I, am I in person today? Am I hybrid? And all of those things. And I really want to commend our teachers for that first year when we had students who were online, but also students who were in school. They actually allowed both to get the same, you know, the same instruction so that they wouldn't miss as much. And then it came to managing the spread, like, okay, now we're in, we have got our students in, how do we manage the spread to make sure we don't have too many people with COVID and then meeting their basic needs?
So that's where maintenance, operations and transportation came in, where we've set up socially-distanced classrooms district-wide. So that a lot of work that went into this. And we also, as you know, at that time, disinfectant, right? So hard to get paper towels, hand sanitizers, right? So, so the team really worked hard to try to, to get these items, which are, you know, at times really expensive. And so I know that our previous director of MOT, Mr. Krebs, did a fantastic job, you know, getting all of the hand sanitizers, you probably heard of the barrels that we purchased, right? At that time, because we had no idea how long this is going to take, and we just needed to get our hands on a lot of them because every, we were like practically, you know, fighting other districts because they were trying to do the same thing, right? So the, we purchased electrostatic sprayers. And so this is for each of our custodian to, to really do a great job in spraying every single classroom, every single room, every single day. Then the plexiglass barriers were, were put in at the main office reception area and also the shared workspaces. We also have the signage you still see everywhere, we still have them at every campus entrance, as well as the, the capacity signs. So I'm sure you're, you've seen those, you know, it's a, just kind of tells you the maximum number of, of people that can be in that space at the same time. So we made sure that those are also put in place. I'm going to talk about the lunch distribution at the next, a few slides.
I was going to say, as this was happening, this was when they told us, you had to clean everything. And then later on, of course, we were told, ah, it's actually airborne. So, but there were some habits that students actually learned, like washing your hands all the time, if you're sick, stay home, so.
So the purchasing and warehouse, you can see everything that we purchased. So the air purifiers and replacement filters, we have those and we will keep them. So which is good because it then will help with the air exchanges per hour. And so that is something that we really invested, the, you know, the one-time money that we received from, from the federal government. So we did, you know, we purchased, for every single classroom, we received two air purifiers. Then we also have the COVID testing. We were always on the call with the CDPH, anytime we hear of the over-the-counter rapid antigen, as well as any, you know, antigen testing that is available to school districts. We, we were first in line to get those, and so which is great. We also partnered with the county to, to provide some of those testing as well. So that was really good for us because, you know, at that time. at that time, the, some of the labs were inundated with all these tests. So we really needed to, to provide them another option. The other items that we purchased, all PPE. So you can see the number of items that we purchased using our, the one-time funds as well as, you know, like masks, face shields, gloves, gowns, right? Sneeze, sneeze shields and then thermometers, hand sanitizers that we talked about earlier and soap. So all of this, this is not including the ones that we received from, that were donated to us. So I know that there were some organizations that came forward and mentioned that they have some available because they were closing their site. They were moving it on to online and so they didn't have any use for them. So we, you know, we said, thank you, please, you know, we will pick them up whenever, whenever you are available. So, so our, our purchasing and warehouse, we just made sure that those items were, were picked up. And then on the.
I think one of the things I just remembered is when we had students in distance learning and we didn't need the masks, the surgical masks, we had actually purchased some before. We offered some to the hospitals that needed them. So I think Oakland and also Mount Eden Hospital.
That's true. And then a child nutrition. So all hands on deck here. So that first day of shutdown, we, we had to come up with a plan on how to, you know, what, how can we support our, our families, our students? And so, so our child nutrition director filled out a waiver form to be able to, to feed the community, right? Not just our students. That was a really good thing because then they can come in and, and tell us the number of meals that they, that they need. And we were able to provide that. So, so that was great. So during the school closure, that was from August 2020 to February 21. So we did a drive-through, walk-up curbside pickup meals where we provided one breakfast and one lunch. And so close to 150,000 breakfasts were served as well as lunches. During hybrid, we delivered food to all exit gates at each campus so that, so they could get their meals at the end before they left. That was the time when we was half-day, right? So it's right before lunch they left. And so, so we did this for, you know, for AM PM groups. The elementary, it was the A and B schedule. And so that was close to 140, 138,000 breakfast and lunch. So when I said all hands in deck, I, when we were during school closure, I remember we were all packaging grab-and-go meals at Creekside. That was our, our hub at that time. And so teachers came in, social workers, our custodians, our bus drivers, right? And so including admin. And so everybody just really just came in to support and just, we really needed all that help because of the, the number of meals that we were serving. So that was great. Yes, so, so one of the things that's, as it became available, you know, in partnership with CDPH and local pharmacies is we were able to offer vaccine clinics. And so we have a list there. And so that's a total of, that, actually, that's 1,285 is really 1,479 because at that time, we didn't have the two vaccine clinics, the, the numbers for them. But that should be close to fifteen, 1,500 vaccines that we were able to, to administer at these vaccine clinics. So, so that was really a great opportunity for us to, to offer to the community, not just our students and staff, but also for the rest of the community. So that again, partnership with local pharmacies, including one of our very own parent, who was really instrumental in getting us quite a few of these. And she is, so I do want to mention her name, Ms. Mosier. So Hannah Mosier.
Marshall Parent.
Marshall Parent, yep.
And then testing became one of the things. We all became experts at testing. We had testing available for students and staff. We have, we had PCR testing until recently at the CFA. We also supported the community if they needed to be tested. But we also started these mobile antigen testing onsite every week, every day at different schools. We had to deal with quarantining, isolation and notification. That was a lot of work for our principals and office staff and our classified staff because there were a lot of complications around, like who gets quarantined, who gets isolated? How do we send messages home? It was a lot of work. And I think, I was really very proud also to be one of the first school districts to, around here, I think. Not one of, I think we were the first one who passed out these take-home tests before, right after the winter break, we all came in here. And then we also had days where Amy, all of us here were trained to give tests, COVID tests to students here before they came back. So, you know, it's, we all kind of learned to do different things. Communication and transparency. I think it was really important for us to let people know that we are not making up, making up our own rules, that we follow the state guidelines, the, the guidelines from our health department. They were very supportive of us. In addition to every other week, they actually had community meetings with the health department. They also came into our superintendent meetings every week and, and supported us and asked, you know, we would ask all our questions. But really a lot of communication to our families as well. Safety plan, COVID cases available online, all of those things. And you know, throughout all of that, you always hear, can this be different? But I think what people may not realize is how much work there was to be done, that no matter what we did, there could have always been a better way to do something. We started our virtual board meetings. You did a great job doing virtual board meetings. And then right after that, when we came back, I mean, at that time, it was, we, I know that Amy had to really work on Zoom. Sometimes we had like a thousand people and we had to change. So all of that was a lot of just back and forth, but it worked really well. And I'm proud to say that once we came back, that we've had, you know, we're streaming. People are able to do, make comments online. Lots of districts have gone back to in-person only and only allow comments in-person and they do not stream. Well, you know, it's, it, it allows our public to be more involved. Challenges. The one thing that really just caused a lot of headaches for us was conflicting guidelines. Sometimes we would hear something from CDC and then the California Department of Health. But we knew that we had to, we really had to follow whichever was the more strict guideline. That was the, that was the important piece by whether it be a CDPH or the state. Everyone had to really pivot, not just our teachers, but all of our classified, all of our admin. Tremendous impact on mental health of students and staff. Nobody can deny that. That is the one thing that the entire country, I think, is noticing. Meeting the academic needs of all students, but especially our English learners. When you're an English learner, it's really important for you to be in-person, to hear other people and to be with people who speak English. And our students with special needs. It was very, very difficult for them and for their families. And also our economically disadvantaged and challenged communities for the support that they needed. So lots of, you know, we, we did an amazing job. Everybody worked really hard. And I, more than anything, I do want to thank the board for being very clear about their directions and really just sticking to the guidelines with the health department. Because there are a lot of times where you want to do things differently. And once you do that, then you're going to have to make judgment calls that may not actually be happening. But, and the last thing I will say, this school district never closed its doors. There were school districts that were closed for over a year. We never closed our district office or our offices at the schools. Everybody was there. And I think at the beginning, when we said, yes, here it is. Everyone rolled up their sleeves, every one of our community of staff and worked hard to make this happen. So I appreciate our, our teachers, our classified, our administrators who really supported us. And when we were passing out lunches and making lunches and all of that, you couldn't tell who was who. Everybody was there helping out. So. And yet, our students and staff adapted, took risks, learned and innovated. We, again, we reopened our schools before most districts did. And one of the things that happened, we expanded our mental health services during that time. I think we knew that there is a huge need. And that's been really wonderful. And even during all of this, we still started a new dual-language immersion program and we expanded our pre-K. All of these things happened while we were dealing with COVID. So. Working together, we made it. So, thank you.
Lavender.
I just want to say, because, you know, I know Gary and I were on the board during that time when that happened. And I know we all collectively faced so much together as a school district, as a community, as a nation, as the world together. I'm really proud of the way that we communicated and people rose up. I mean, it was a stressful situation. Everybody was going through things. We talk about, you know, social and emotional supports. We have tons of people who are now alienated by themselves, dealing with things. Kids that are facing stuff at home, that, you know, school's their only sanctuary. And our community members rose up, our PTA's rose up. We had a great organization come and bring food so people didn't have food scarcity. I mean, we saw the best and the worst of people, put it in terms. But this school district, this community rose up and helped each other. And through all of it, we've learned a lot. We all felt a lot. But we're better on the other side because of how we communicated, how we work together. And I'm just really proud of the things that we've done.
Thank you, Lavender. Gary and then Mike.
Well, I'll just say ditto to that. I think, thank you for explaining that very nicely. I do admire the fact that we did develop a plan and we stuck with it. And I think that was really important regardless of what was being said in, at some, by some in the community. But we overall had enormous support in the community. So that was what was really great. The second thing I'd like to touch on is what Parveen just mentioned at the very end. And that is, even in the midst of the most challenging time in California education in a century probably or more, the district still pulled off. It, you know, it was more than what you said. It's not just the language immersion. It's expanding the TK program, setting up a new grading system, new after-school program. I mean, there have been many more things that I'm not remembering right now. But I mean, clearly the district can walk and chew gum at the same time. So it's pretty admirable. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Mike and then Quentin.
Yeah, I think I have a comment and then a question. I'm just reflecting from, there was a webinar I saw right at the beginning of the pandemic and there was this educator talking about, this is an opportunity for us to reset when we come to the other side of whatever this is, to not go back to our bad habits, to not go back to the things that, that perpetuated inequity in our schools before. As I said previously, really excited about school lunches and how that's becoming a universal thing, right? And that, that seems to be a value that's, that's, that's in California that's important. I love the investments in, in, in mental health. And I, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm scared that this kind of celebration that we're on the other side will forget that we need those ongoing investments. Because if you've had to deal with this, finding a therapist or finding any type of mental health intervention right now in this country is absolutely terrifying. So I, maybe my, my, my question is, what, what are the things that we've jettisoned and that we're really okay with? Like, that's good. And what, and what do we need to be looking at to invest going forward? And what, what do we need to do? Where do we need to knock on the door in Sacramento or in DC? What should we be fighting for?
Yeah, good, good, great question. I think one of the things, you know, I look back and say, what have we, we really have learned new things. I see a lot more technology integrated in our classrooms. I see our students are way better than they probably were before. I also see the tutoring program that we have is something that we're going to continue to have. We never did that before. I think a lot of times, like I said, it was really a handful of kids who could benefit from it and now many, many thousands of kids can. I, I think what we need to be thinking about is, like you said, we continue to advocate at the state for funding, to make sure that it's ongoing funding, to make sure that there are enough, let's say, social workers that we can actually hire, enough teachers that we can hire. So all of those things are really a, a big part of our advocacy efforts. We also have to continue to advocate for, for enrollment and how they're going to calculate our ADA. That's another piece. And then we've got to tell them to stop giving us new mandates, frankly. It's like, at one point, we were, we, with legislators, we're like, we got to get out of the COVID business. We've got to do our work as educators. And I think when we think about mental health, we, there is a lot of need. And I think we need to continue to look at ways to support our students. You know, there, there are lots of new ways to actually approach some of these things. But we do need, I, I'm proud of this district. You can't find too many districts with this number of students with 11 social workers. It's just unheard of. So.
Can I just follow up on, is it okay if I follow up on?
Can you go after Quentin?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I remember the day that we went to lockdown. I was an eighth grader at Canyon and I remember talking to my friends about it. I'd be like, oh, whatever, you know, probably back on Monday. Yeah, I said, I'll see you on Monday. And then I didn't see these people for at least a year. Some of them I haven't seen since that day. And it really would have been so easy for the students, the parents, the teachers and the board and the district in general to just be like, this is out of our hands. This is too hard. We can't go forth here. And I highlighted some of these things that you mentioned in the presentation. The things that you did really impacted students' lives, especially mine. I can speak from experience that a lot of students would not be in the place they are today if it wasn't for the efforts made by the district. And it really did impact the students positively. Like the Chromebooks. I, I can't even imagine a world without my school Chromebook. Like that, that's just, that's incredible that this, there used to be not, there used to be Chromebooks that weren't just personal Chromebooks yet at home. The paper tutoring service, it made it easier for students and teachers to, to really look at their essays. I, I've used it a few times and really get the help that they need. And the last thing I'll mention is the testing. A lot of parents and families in our community really don't have access to this testing. And it's, I think it's great that the district provided this testing to the students. And it really did help us get through this whole crazy, life forever-changing pandemic.
I was just curious about online learning and the follow-up to that. I, I know that, I, I think our enrollment is much higher now in the virtual academy post-pandemic-ish. But are educators thinking about what the, you know, now that every student has a Chromebook, what the, the impact is of that integration of technology? And what's, is there a pedagogical purpose of, of deploying curriculum through like online learning? Might we see a portion of high school students' schedule online? Could we see it like in elementary schools and middle schools as well? I'm just wondering, is online learning dead? Or will it play a role going forward? What does it look like?
Yeah, I would say distance learning as we had it during COVID is dead, hopefully. It'll ever, but virtual, I mean, right now, our teachers are doing a lot of this work on. It'll, but virtual, I mean, right now, our teachers are doing a lot of this work online, like homework, checking essays and things like that. I think those things will stay. We also still have our virtual academy. What we, what's really exciting is if I, I, I just keep thinking about, if I am a high school student, I now have an option. I can be in school all day and go to school. Or I can actually take two of my classes online because it's on my own time. I can actually work, I can do an internship or the other way around. I mean, there are lots of opportunities. I'm not, I think the kids were so hungry to see each other and to come back in person. I think us as adults always worry about some things that kids haven't figured out. We were like, oh, okay, when they come back, they're all want to be, it's actually not, you know, they, they want to be together. They wanted to be here. It's not that they're all now because they've been online that they're constantly going to just be doing that. I think I find more adults actually stuck to their phones. So I, I'm hopeful. Our, our students have learned, we have learned to use better, you know, just get better at using technology. So hopefully, we won't have another pandemic. And I, I have to say, I'm really hopeful. Right now, we're in a place where people are feeling normal. We've had all these activities. And you know what I forgot to say is, during all of that, we made sure we had graduation, for example, even if it was online. The performances, I've got to add that. The performances that our choir and, and band and music students did were incredible. I have to tell you, the women's club ladies absolutely loved the fact that this was all online and they could watch. That is a win. So.
Thank you. Gary and then Dolly.
I just have a couple of quick observations. I don't want us to forget the fact that pre-COVID, we were already distributing Chromebooks and internet access to every kid in the district who didn't have it. They took out a Chromebook at the beginning of the year, like a library book, and kept it the whole year. And pre-COVID, we had a virtual academy that was accredited for graduation. So these things set us up really early on. We were a little bit more prepared than other people. And one more comment on the money. You were saying, what can we do when, in Sacramento? I think it's not just more money. I think it's stability of the money. Because we tend to go like this. And then when we're in the trough, we lose all kinds of programs. So some stability there would be a lot better. So those are my quick comments.
Thank you, Gary. Dolly.
Yeah, I wasn't, of course, on the board when the, the school shut down. But I was a teacher here at that time. So I remember there was a lot of angst, anxiety by a lot of people about what was going to happen. And Castro Valley Unified did a really great job. The district did a really great job trying to make these things better. And I know I, later on, having worked for another district, I was able to compare two districts and, you know, having known them very well. And so it was really good to see all of the changes that Castro Valley Unified made that were really very good for students. And I guess Michael and I came in about halfway through this whole COVID process thing. And there was a sort of a, a ultimate plan before we got here. But we embraced it and, or I, I shouldn't speak for you. I embraced it. Okay, yes. And it was a very good one to be following. For instance, the health recommendations from the county and from CDC and all of that. That really was a very good idea. And there have been so, like, there have been many things mentioned by other people. There were so many good things that really came out of this. And social workers and more mental health, I would definitely, you know, want to retain those and make it even more robust.
Thank you. So I'll go last. That was sort of a walk through trauma and, and inspiring all at the same time. My watch tracks my heart rate. So I'm sure if I look back at it, there will be places in my graph that my heart rate went up as you're talking about all of the things that we all went through. And I am so grateful to be a part of this district. I have friends in other districts and have, I've always bragged about how we got Chromebooks out to students so quickly. Because as Trustee Howard said, we had already started doing that. So the lift was heavy, but it was slightly less heavy than some districts that hadn't made that investment. So thank you for your leadership through all of that and this presentation to, to bring back the trauma, but to wrap it in inspiration.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to item C.
Yeah, go ahead. Yes. So this, at the January 12, 2022 board meeting. So you approved naming the stadium field at the Castro Valley High School stadium to honor Coach John C. Brosnan. So since then, what we've done is we've worked with the family. And so we have some options here that we are bringing to you for consideration. And so the options are included in the packet. One is a plaque, a scoreboard name display, a mural, as well as the decorative name display. So. Stuff for you.
So it, so for tonight, I guess, you know, just considering as, if, if you're okay with all four of them, and, you know, let us know which, you know, and then we can work with the family to like choose one or two of those things.
I thought they were all beautiful. So I, I don't know who came up with the designs, but I thought they were great. And the, the plaque was beautiful also. I would like to recommend that we leave it to the school site to decide on ultimately what, what they see fit for their sites.
Could we have that as a motion, do you think?
Sure.
I was wondering if our student board member would like to make that motion.
I know, he can make a motion now.
In the consent, we approved his ability to make a motion.
And, and he's seen all four of them.
Yeah, I have. I got a chance to take a look at him. Yeah, absolutely. What's that, what's that? Sorry. It was a.
So if you're going to make a motion, you would, you would say, I'd like to move that.
Yeah, first time. I would like to make a motion that we leave it to the school sites to decide what plaque or what thing is going to be put in their stadium.
Thank you. Would someone like to second that?
I would second that.
Thank you. So, did you have, did you want to make a public comment? Please come on up. Come on up.
Bind with the scoreboard and the plaque, except the scoreboard sample is not attractive or anything. So I was like, I mean, this, which I sent to Susie. You know, it's just a better looking thing, that's all. It, I mean, the, the plaque looks really good. It's going to be blah relief. I don't know what happened there, but so. The other things, nothing. I'm not into the mural necessarily. I don't know about the outside sign. I wasn't sure what people, it's like it's changed from what we initially, you know, had a different font. Font that's on the scoreboard is what was going to be on the outside. And then the font that matches the font on the scoreboard would be what his name would be in. So, so anyhow, scoreboard's pretty standard, plaque's pretty standard. And that's all I'm saying, so.
Okay, awesome. I think what we really, since this discussion, what we would, we wanted to share the four that they had come up with. And if you're okay with all four of them, and then listening to that, I think we'll continue to work with the family as well and the school and see which maybe two things we can do, not just one, but maybe I would suggest doing two. And then we'll go from there.
All right, Mike and then Lavender and then Gary and then Dolly.
I'll be honest, I would, maybe, maybe I was reading the board packet too late. But I wasn't too sure what the determination was. It's like one, two, all of them or just some of them. I like a good plaque myself. I, I thought the, the plaque looked really awesome. It, it feels very historical, right? So I just appreciate that we're honoring a member of our community this way. Someone who contributed so much to the high school.
Thank you, Lavender.
I just wanted to say something directly to the family. I know what it's like to lose someone close to you and how hard that can be, especially a member who's made such an impact on the community. You're reminded of it a lot. And I think this is a good way to honor your loved one in a way that honors all of his hard work for this community and how many lives he impacted. I just want to pass that along. Specifics, we'll leave up to you and the school. But I just, you know, I just wanted to honor that.
Gary and then Dolly.
Well, I think all of them are okay. The plaque is really the best. I agree with that. That's by far the best part of it. It's really nice, I think. But I think, you know, if I understood what Parveen said, we would just transmit your thoughts to the school folks and then they, I'm sure they can figure it out in the best way. I'd be happy with whatever. I think it's a great thing, so thank you.
If I, I think that sometimes we name a building, but people just see the name. There's no description. And what I like about that is that it actually talks about Mr. Brosnan. And then the font and all of that, we can work on. It's no big deal.
Dolly.
Yeah, I wasn't sure either whether we were picking one or all or those sorts of things. So it just, the, I really did like the mural, but not necessarily for the, the, the naming of it so much as it, that it just was very positive, CVHS and sports and those kind of good things. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so the, the names seem to be a little bit smaller on that one. So that's all I, the comment I had to make.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is also yes. So we will leave the decision to the high school about placement and their preference of, of the honoring. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, we will move on to item D, intent to reappoint Personnel Commissioner Wilkerson.
So it's Castro Valley's honor to have one of our longstanding commissioners, Tony Wilkerson, also present here. And she is not only longstanding within our district, but also in the state of California. And she is truly committed to upholding the merit district rules that we have in place and really has that equity lens in providing that with our classifieds. So it is our recommendation to continue and for the board to recommend the attention of notice for Commissioner Tony Wilkerson to serve on the commission.
Thank you. This is an action.
I'm happy to recommend that we transmit our intent to reappoint my neighbor Personnel Commissioner Wilkerson to the board again.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker? And my vote is also yes. So, thank you. Thank you for your service, yes. All right, so item E is a public hearing assuring the sufficiency of instructional materials. And I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments? There are no comments, so I will close the public hearing. All right, and on to resolution eight dash twenty-two, twenty-three, sufficiency of instructional materials. This is an action item.
I would move that we pass this resolution.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is also yes. So the resolution is adopted five zero. Approval of the personnel reports.
I'll move approval of the personnel report.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote, please.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So the personnel report is approved five zero. Resolution nine dash twenty-two, twenty-three.
I move that we adopt resolution nine, twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Sorry, I, I do have a question and it's more for Susie. I'm confused still by the state scan limit versus our local one. Is there a way, does that make it, does my question, it make any sense?
Yeah, so what this again limit is, we calculate our limit. And then basically this report that we, that you're approving this resolution, it's, it's, it's a report that goes to CDE. Then what happens is they take the, the limit from this Castro Valley Unified and plug it in. And so they know what their limit is going to be. If that makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So the resolution is adopted five zero. Approved certification of unaudited actuals.
Move for their approval.
Oh, I think there's a presentation.
I've read this, sorry.
It'll be quick. It's a few slides here. You've seen, you've seen twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And now here we are, unaudited actuals. That means we are done with twenty-one, twenty-two. So just, just showing you the revenue from estimated actuals. So if you recall estimated actuals, we included that as part of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So there's a column for estimated actuals. And now we're, we're basically doing a comparison between what we estimated and the, the actuals as of June 30th. So LCFF, you see that there's a slight change there. And that's because of, there's an, there's an adjustment in property tax and prior year adjustment that, that we needed to record. Federal funds there, it's, it's a, a reduction of 1.6 million dollars. So I do want to let you know that that's not a reduction that we are, that, that, you know, it doesn't mean that we're losing that money. That's not the case. This is actually cash that we received in, in prior year that because we did not spend all of the money, the federal government authorizes, you know, is authorizing us to actually carry that over in the new year. So that's why it's called unearned revenue. You know, there's different programs such as Title I, Title II and other one-time federal funds that we receive like S R one, S R two and S R three, that we still have to carry over in the, that we're carrying over in the current year. Other state funds, that's an increase of close to $600,000. That is because of the ELOP program or ELOP and the lottery adjustment. We, we did receive a late notice sometime in June that the, the rate for the lottery went up because of the revenue that they received. So they passed it on to school districts and that, that's why that is a, an increase for us. Other local revenue around this, it's always just good to see at the end of the year, we are seeing, we've seen an increase in local donations and a little bit of the E-rate for our technology devices. So that's 1.4 million dollars. So overall, it's, it's really a, a change, an increase of 157,000 dollars. And you see at the bottom there, the, the breakdown of, of that in terms of percentage. Spenditure from estimated to unaudited, salaries and benefits is combined there. 3.5 million dollars unspent because of the unspent supplemental funds and other grants. So you're seeing that across all the way down. That's about 10.6 million dollars. Again, this is not because we did not do a great job in estimating. job in estimating. It's because of the one-time money and grants that we receive. What we do is once we know the allocation, we need to, we record the entire amount, right? So like, a good example would be the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant that we received last year. You approved the plan that Mr. Dr. Ryman shared with you. And that is actually all the way to twenty-five, twenty-six. And so every single year, you know that we will have some carryover, but that because that allocation needs, we need to record it in our books. That's why it shows up as carryover. And you will see this for a few years. Components of ending fund balance. This is how we ended the year. So ending fund balance in unrestricted and restricted funds, a total of twenty-nine, twenty-one point nine million dollars. And so here's the breakdown revolving cash. We set aside, we have stores prepaid expense. We also have that legally restricted. So I mentioned earlier of the carryover. And that's the reason why we have a huge legally restricted is because of that carryover money for the one-time funds and also the grants. Our supplemental funds, we do set aside our supplemental funds because it's required, though we've done this every single year. I know that for a lot of some, for a lot of districts, this is new for them. This is not new for us. We've always set aside carryover for our supplemental funds. And so that is $1.3 million. And then we end up with Reserve for Economic Uncertainties, which is eight point, eight point two million dollars, which is about seven percent for us. Other funds, ending fund balance, it's always good to see other funds. I know we always focus on general fund, but it's good to see other funds. So we have the Student Activity Reserve Fund. This is the ASB. They ended the year with four hundred twenty-four, you know, close to $425,000, which is great. Again, this ASB is not just a high school. It's also like the middle school. So that's a combined total there. Pass through, obviously, you know, we always want to see zero here because the money that we receive for our special education member districts, we don't keep that. They get the money. So that's why it's always zero. But from adults, education, $1.4 million. I do want to highlight Cafeteria Special Reserve of close to $1.7 million. You're not used to seeing this huge fund balance. So I do want to recognize the great work that our child nutrition department has done the last couple of years, really looking at expenditures as well as also our meals that we serve. So this is wonderful because in the past, I'm sure, you know, you heard or you were here when the general fund had to make a contribution to the Cafeteria Special Reserve. In this case, that's not. And for the past, how many years now? For four years, we haven't made any, any contribution to the Cafeteria Reserve Fund. So this is a good thing for us. We still have money building fund. You see the 17.6 million because we did sell the last series of bonds, bonds. And so now we still have carryover that we are going to continue to use for the remainder of our projects. And then we have the, the Special Reserve for Capital Outlet Projects, so $1.4 million. And then you can see the rest fund of the funds there. Oh, actually, that was the last one. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Dolly?
I just wanted to ask a little bit more. What is this E-ray? Devices?
Yes. So this is a, it's actually, it's a reimbursement. So we get up to, I want to say forty percent of eligible devices or software. And so our technology director does a great job in keeping track of that, working with a, with a company to really identify what is, what we are eligible for to get reimbursed. And like I said, it's really good. Forty percent of a lot of things before, we used to be able to get reimbursement for many of our devices, but not so much. It's just a few items now that we can and we still go out after those type of reimbursement.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. All right, now, Mike, you can make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the certification of the twenty-two, one, twenty-two unaudited actuals.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So the certification is approved, five zero. All right, board member comments and reports. Quentin, is there anything you wanted to add to the report you already gave?
Just that, you know, there was a lot talked about in this meeting and that I'm very thankful that we have a district that listens to its community and to the parents and the students within the district. And that just the fact of you all listening really does help the students have a better experience and just overall make things more enjoyable for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. So just had a great meeting and an update from Castro Valley Educational Foundation. It's really great to see the evolution of the organization and their ability to just really, during the pandemic, to really find their footing. They're implementing, I don't know if it's a strategic plan, but they really are just doubling down in how they market it themselves and how they are reaching out and engaging the community. So it was great to be at that. I spent both days of the Fall Festival, both at the Ed Foundation and also at our district booth. I did ask, I spoke with a lot of students and Superintendent Susie, others, you'll be happy to hear, our students really like our lunches. So I mean, I was really, I spoke with a lot of students and they were giving me specific feedback about the macaroni and cheese they like, the Chinese food. So I just really appreciate that intentionality around our food services. I'm going to, I have an email to follow up to do a tour of our facilities and to learn more about that. I just wanted to make a shout out to trustee Aisha Knowles from the County Board of Education. She was in the San Francisco Chronicle talking about something that's important to me that Dr. Ryman and I have talked about Russell City. She was featured talking about the impact on her own family and just that, how Russell City was a community that was erased. I think it was basically where Toys R Us used to be in Hayward. And just, it's a good story. I hope everyone reads it and learns more about our local history. Something I have also spoken about here, and I appreciate the efforts of this district to educate our employees about our student loans. I'm happy to report that my student loans were discharged under the Public Service Loans Forgiveness Act. And I hope anyone out there who has not applied by October 31st will do so. And I really appreciate the messaging that this district has made. And I've spoken with teachers because of the messaging that this district sent, they have applied for this one-time ability to qualify for public service student loan forgiveness. So thank you. And then lastly, I sent a message to the creator of that flag, the Intersex Progress Pride Flag, Valentino Vecchietti. He's based, she, sorry, they're based in the UK and was just bragging about our district. And they were very proud of what we're doing here and just were, wanted to share that. And it was very affirming to hear the story of why they went about doing it and how seeing those flags has created a sense of inclusion in their own life. So just wanted to say, to share that. Thank you.
Gary?
So I spent the weekend at the Fall Festival also and had a really good time there. I just want to say congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce for putting on a really terrific show down there. It went very well and the community really enjoyed it. I had the honor and the pleasure of being able to introduce the Madrigals to open the Fall Festival on Saturday morning. And that was fun. And I guess we could also wish Larissa a happy birthday, plus I think one day or two days, I've forgotten now. And last night, the superintendent and I were at the Canyon PTA meeting, at least virtually, and had a good time with them. So that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dolly?
Like most everybody else or everybody else, I was at the Fall Festival for about an hour and a half, two hours on Saturday. I had a quick Regional Policy Board meeting today. I'm going to be visiting CVHS on Monday. And I have, as of late, gone to a few of these Rotary Lunches, which have been very informative. One about Juvenile Hall. The last one was about global climate change, both very interesting and informative. And I would recommend these, these lunches. Fall Festival was really great. It was great to talk to a lot of people and be in the CVUSD booth. A lot of energy. I actually got to meet Principal Fortenberry while I was there, which was really nice, which I'll see him again on Monday. But I just ran into him, started talking to him, didn't know who he was. But now I do. Yeah. So that was really good. Fall Festival was really fantastic. I, and it was so good to see it back again. Thank you.
Last week, I attended the Castro Valley Elementary PTA meeting virtually with Parveen. It was really nice to see the parents. They're very involved, parent group. Really nice to be able to stop by and say hello. And then I did also attend the Fall Festival on Saturday and got to stay at our booth. And it was really great to see all the administrators there. You know, high school was representing. And, you know, it's really nice to see that old family there. So nice to see them.
Well, I realize it's been a while since our last meeting, but I haven't represented the district in any, anyway. I'm embarrassed. You all are busy. But I did stop by the booth at the Fall Festival and it was nice to talk to the folks there. So our meeting is adjourned?